The state has passed its budget earlier in the process. But this year, because it's such a late completion, they had an opportunity to go in and change the Chapter 70 budget. The Chapter 70 budget, remember, is also partially predicated upon the town of North Reading's municipal revenue growth and all kinds of housing statistics and things of that nature. Normally, you would have waited a whole year for those things to change, but because they had an opportunity to do that, and they did. On the other side, Mel, you've mentioned some negative impacts. There may be some positive impacts.
That's right.
Possibly some of the revenue assumptions the town is making could change over the summer as well. So I, Dr. Troughton and I talked about creating kind of a sheet, once again summarizing the pluses and the minuses, but I think we've decided to wait for the dust to settle.
Yes.
And wait for the town and our planning team to meet again and to look at what lies ahead. Because I think our goal now is to get ready for the fall school program and be mindful of the problems that may lay in front of us, but at the same time, we have a job to do, and that's to get things started. And if worst-case scenario, you know, we have ways of saving money. We don't want to freeze spending, you know, things we don't want to do. But, you know, we're good at managing the budget and go do what we have to.
I could ask one more question, which I think, Carl, this is more of a definition question. Looking at information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Fiscal Ten, they have our foundation budget at $23,612,464. Then they have our required net school spending at $22,836,522. What does required net school spending mean? Does that encompass what the town also spends on benefits?
Yes.
So we're well above that, if you'd...
Yes.
Okay.
We're in no danger of falling below net school spending. It's a complicated one, but we're not even close. If I was to give you an approximate dollar figure for what the town and school together spends on education, including benefits and things of that nature, you're up over $25 million.
And that's when they computed all of these numbers again, as you just said, that's where they came to the reduced stimulus funds number, or 775, because they recalculated required net school spending and foundation budget. And so that's why it went from $853 to 775.
You know, one of the other most significant factors, too, is part of this equation, is the definitions that we haven't seen yet for the stimulus funding.
Right.
So we could probably sit here with a ledger sheet showing a bunch of problems on one side, but a bunch of positive outcomes on the other side. So instead of narrowing on one or two, I hope you'll accept our thinking that it's a little premature to be too definitive about where we stand today.
Sure.
One of the things I've noticed in the lister is that the conversation, the message is stopped.
Right.
The budget came out, the conference budget came out, and it was announced that it was out, but nobody commented.
Well, I did.
I know.
You muted.
But there were like two comments.
Yeah.
And I think what we're seeing is that everybody's got fatigue.
I agree.
And they're looking at it as there's so many things that are unknown out there. You know, there's a question by somebody or a comment by somebody that a governor could actually change the amount of stimulus money.
Right.
That we get, paying no attention to it, because that's a grant.
Right.
And he has the ability to manipulate that. So we don't know where anything is, and, you know, at the same time, I think it's a good idea. Obviously, we're going to track, but track it carefully as we go along and be as frugal as we possibly can. How can we be more frugal? I'm sorry.
Don't ask that.
I'm running over myself.
No, you make a good point. And in support of what you're saying, we've had to make a lot of assumptions on how we're going to use the stimulus money, long before we even know what the streams are going to be. So just in very general terms, you know, we've decided that, you know, we're earmarking about $330,000 of the special education money. We have that offset in the budget. We're being a little more conservative with the special education stimulus money because all the information we have now suggests to us that those funds are going to be very strictly defined. But at the same time, you know, we have that so-called SFSF money, which is the regular education broader stimulus money, and that's the $853,000 number that we've been using for so long. And we've actually gone through the budget and picked out pieces of the budget that will, we hope, will fit the criteria of stimulus money once it becomes available to us. It's very challenging, though, because the more we spend on investment, the less we have to offset continuing expenses. The most logical way to invest is through teachers. But the problem, as we've noted before, with investing on teachers is that you have a 9% or above cost for the pension. There are rumors out there that that's going to be waived, but I think, I could go through this line by line, but I think suffice to say, we have a spending plan really pretty much down to the penny, based on all the stimulus monies that we're aware of, the grants we're aware of, the revolving funds, even the increase today in the athletic fee that you quoted, has found its way into this budget. So I'm going to issue a second budget document once all of this information is more clear, because more and more, our general fund budget is based on revolving funds, grants, fees, all kinds of other things. So I think it would be useful to see on one page all of the external funds that we use to do our operations. I can't do that yet.
Right.
But it's in the millions of dollars now.
That's a great idea.
So you'll see that mid to late summer.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on the budget? Okay. I think the last thing on the agenda, policy development. So we have the anti-bullying policy. Hold on. Oh, um...
Oh, we're not doing this.
Yeah, skip the... The public service.
Anti-bullying, stuff that's...
Okay. The anti-bullying policy is up for revised draft number five, June 25th, first reading?
No, revised draft number six.
Okay.
Which I put at your desk.
At your desk?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Policy subcommittee that today.
Okay. It's not just bullying. It's just bullying.
That was my fault, sorry.
Okay. The North Reading School Committee prohibits any acts of harassment or bullying. The committee believes that a safe and civil environment in school is necessary for students to learn and achieve high academic standards. Harassment or bullying, like other disruptive or violent behaviors, is conduct that disrupts both the student's ability to learn and the school's ability to educate its students in a safe environment. Demonstration of appropriate behavior, treating others with civility and respect, and refusing to tolerate harassment or bullying is expected of administrators, faculty, staff, and volunteers to provide positive examples for student behavior. As a form of harassment, bullying is defined as any gesture or written, verbal, graphic, or physical act, including electronically transmitted acts, that a reasonable person should know would have the potential to harm person or damage an individual's property or place an individual in reasonable fear of such physical, social, or psychological harm.
Should take a look, right?
Oh, yeah. Or acts that have the effect of harassing, controlling, isolating, intimidating, or demeaning another individual. Such behavior is considered harassment or bullying, whether it takes place on or off school property, at any school-sponsored function, or in a school vehicle or bus. Bullying motivated either by an actual or perceived characteristic, such as race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, or a mental, physical, or sensory disability or impairment, or by any other distinguishing characteristic, may be considered as a hate crime and subject to possible criminal investigation. The school committee expects students to conduct themselves in a manner in keeping with their levels of development, maturity, and demonstrated capabilities, with proper regard for the rights and welfare of other students, school staff, volunteers, and contractors. The committee believes that standards for student behavior must be set cooperatively through interaction among the students, parents, and guardians, staff, and community members of the school district, producing an atmosphere that encourages students to grow in self-discipline and mutual respect. The school directs the superintendent and/or his/her designee to develop administrative guidelines and procedures for the implementation of this policy. The guidelines and/or procedures will address prevention and education efforts, expectations of students and staff conduct, school responses including disciplinary actions of bullying incidents, and procedures for reporting and addressing complaints of bullying.
I like it.
Any thoughts?
This is revised draft six, so you know that we've put a lot of thought into this. And I think that this is a rational way to go at the anti-bullying effort. A lot will depend on what the superintendent comes up with for specifics, but I think those are our best left in the years of the administrators.
That's a question I was going to ask, though. Will there be a set of guidelines or forms or regulations that go behind this?
Yes. And do they come back to the committee for review?
They will come back to the committee for review, and actually Friday, this Friday, we're meeting with our attorney to begin to outline what that might look like.
David, in the one to the third paragraph, it says, "The school committee expects students to conduct themselves in a manner keeping with levels of maturity." It doesn't reference what we expect of the staff. And I know this is an anti-bullying policy that's meant for staff and students as well. Do we feel that the emphasis or the inclusion of staff is understood in the tone of this?
I think that in the first paragraph, and that's why I put it up there, demonstration of appropriate behavior, treating others with civility and respect, and refusing to tolerate harassment or bullying is expected of there are the adults.
Okay, I see that.
And then I think it also gets repeated again, that it is, we do expect the adults. It's not based on level of maturity, it's the adults have that full respect.
Okay, I can see that. In the third paragraph, you're referencing the age, not just the student.
I think there was a question about how do you look at this from the eyes of a kindergarten first grader versus a high school student or a seventh grader.
I like it. I think it...
Yeah.
It ref... We brought this up at the new subcommittee, and we were looking for something that spoke about a positive atmosphere, and that certainly reflected in the inclusion of staff as well as students.
The only mistake I saw was that fourth line down, the second paragraph, it says, "social or psychological," not "social or..." Anything else?
An potential to harm a person or damage an individual's property. On the third line down, second paragraph.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Second paragraph.
Oh, awesome.
The fifth line up, I think it's characteristic, not characteristics.
Yep.
Right.
And I think in the first line of the last paragraph, the school committee...
So do we have a motion?
The second paragraph in the third line would add the potential to harm a person, and then in the next line, physical, social, or...
I'll make a motion to accept, is it the first reading of the...
Draft six.
Draft six of the new anti-bullying policy, as amended.
Amended as bullying policy.
Amended as, yeah, as anti-bullying policy, yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
That's from, um... It's different, though.
Is it David? Can I be joined?
Can I just explain this?
Yeah, go ahead, explain that. I'm trying to...
We have for many years, as required, had a policy on sexual harassment. It's actually both federal and state reforming. However, it's been suggested, recommended, that we create a second policy, a new policy, and name it and direct it against or for staff, employees. So that's the one that is being presented here.
So this is sexual harassment of employees? Or is it by them?
It's either.
Right. Okay.
All right. North Reading Public Schools School Committee Policy on Sexual Harassment of Employees. The North Reading Public Schools is committed to maintaining a working environment free of sexual harassment and intimidation for all persons within the North Reading School community. Administrators, faculty, and all other staff are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner so as to provide an atmosphere free from sexual harassment and with respect of others at all times while in the workplace and at school-sponsored programs and activities. Sexual harassment of employees is unlawful under federal law Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and state law Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 151B. It is also unlawful to retaliate against an employee for complaining about sexual harassment or for cooperating with an investigation. Definition: Sexual harassment is unwelcome conduct of sexual nature. Unwelcome sexual advances, pressure for sexual activity, inappropriate physical touching, or other verbal or physical contact of a sexual nature constitute sexual harassment when: Number one, submission or rejection of such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly as a term or condition of employment; or: Number two, submission to or rejection of such conduct is used as a basis for employment decision affecting the employee, such as supervisory decisions and evaluation of performance; or: Number three, such conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with an employee's work performance by creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive working environment. Whether the conduct constitutes a hostile or offensive working environment depends on the specific circumstances and the severity and pervasiveness of the conduct. Sexual harassment can include a range of behaviors such as a pattern of sexually aggressive comments, insults, or name-calling, unwelcome discussion about sexual activities, offensive gestures or touching, or a display of pictures or symbols of a sexual nature which are communicated in any form, including electronically, such as, but not limited to, cell phones, text messaging, or the internet. Reporting: Any employee who believes that he or she has been subject to sexual harassment is urged to promptly contact his or her supervisor, any administrator or staff member in his or her building, or any central office administrator. Unless the concerned employee otherwise requests, any supervisor, administrator, or staff member receiving a sexual harassment complaint shall bring the matter to the attention of the superintendent of schools immediately. A verbal or written complaint may be filed directly with the coordinator for non-discrimination compliance, Ms. Pamela Bowden, North Reading Middle School, 19 Sherman Road, North Reading, Mass., 01864, at phone number 978-664-8557. No retaliation. Any employee who believes that he or she has been subjected to sexual harassment should feel free to report such conduct. Any form of retaliation, threat, intimidation, or harassment against any individual for filing a report or for cooperating in an investigation of a complaint is prohibited and will not be tolerated. Investigation and action: The North Reading Public Schools will conduct a prompt, thorough, and impartial investigation of any complaint of sexual harassment, even if it is not filed in writing or on the district's grievance form. Appropriate precautionary steps, as determined by the school administration, may be taken during the course of the investigation. Confidentiality will be maintained to the extent consistent with the school's obligations to conduct a thorough investigation. Please refer to the grievance complaint procedure for information about the formal investigation process and the alternative process of an informal resolution through conciliation. If an investigation determines that sexual harassment, retaliation, or other inappropriate conduct has occurred, prompt steps to stop the conduct and reasonably prevent its recurrence will be taken. Any employee found to have engaged in sexual harassment is subject to discipline up to and including discharge, which will be administered in a manner consistent with law, and any collective bargaining agreement covering an employee. Information: Copies of the grievance form and the grievance complaint procedure are on the district's website and in each school building. Questions may be referred to Ms. Bowden or the Office of Superintendent David S. Troughton, North Reading Middle School, 19 Sherman Road, North Reading, Mass., 01864, at phone number Employees can also obtain information from the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission at phone number 617-565-3200, and the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination at phone number 617-727-3990.
Can we go with that again?
Yeah.
The next to last paragraph, last paragraph, should say procedure instead of procure. That's the only...
Complaint procedure.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the North Reading Public Schools School Committee Policy on Sexual Harassment of Employees with one...
With one amendment.
With one amendment.
All right. Second thought. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now, there is one more, 504 policy?
No, the one that was included, again, Attorney McGuire suggests that while it's okay to have one policy on sexual harassment, it actually is probably more enhanced to have one directed for employees, and then basic, then to have a second one focused on students. So one of them in the packet included the policy on sexual harassment of students. And this policy basically exists now, it's just being... So we actually am recommending that you read this one as well.
Please do.
Okay. This is policy S... This first reading policy, two, section two, D, 5B. North Reading Public Schools School Committee Policy on Sexual Harassment of Students. North Reading Public Schools is committed to maintaining a learning environment free of sexual harassment of students at school and school-sponsored programs and activities. All members of the school community, including administrators, teachers, staff, and students, are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner with respect to others while at school, on school property, and on school buses. Definition: Sexual harassment is harassment which is of a sexual nature. Unwelcome sexual advances, pressure for sexual activity, inappropriate physical touching, and other verbal or physical conduct of sexual nature constitute sexual harassment when: Submissive: One, submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly as a term or condition of a student's academic work; or: Two, student's response to such conduct is used as the basis for academic decisions affecting a student, such as grades or participation in school programs or activities; or: Three, such conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with students' academic performance, participation in school programs or activities, by creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive school environment. Sexual harassment can include a range of behaviors such as sexual insults and name-calling, physical gestures, or a display of pictures or symbols of a sexual nature which are communicated in any form, including electronically by cell phones, text messaging, or the internet. Do we want to change that to same?
I would say to amend it, such as, but not limited to...
Right, to such as, but not limited to cell phones, text messaging, or the internet. So same as the other one, okay. It is important for students to make clear to peers no particular behavior is unwelcome, intimidating, or offensive. Reporting: Any student who believes that he or she has been subject to sexual, subjected or is it subject, subjected to sexual harassment, or any parent or other of individuals who has witnessed or learned about possible sexual harassment of a student, is urged to promptly contact any administrator, staff member, or any central office administrator. Unless the student otherwise requests, any administrator or staff member receiving a sexual harassment complaint shall bring the matter to the attention of the superintendent of schools immediately. A direct report may also be made to the coordinator for non-discrimination compliance, Ms. Pamela Bowden, North Reading Middle School, 19 Sherman Road, North Reading, Mass., 01864, at telephone number 978-664-8557. No retaliation. Any student who believes that he or she has been sexually harassed should feel free to report such conduct. Any form of retaliation, threat, intimidation, or harassment against any individual for filing a report or for cooperating in an investigation of a complaint is prohibited and will not be tolerated. Investigation and action: The North Reading Public Schools will conduct a prompt, thorough, and impartial investigation of any complaint of harassment, even if it is not filed in writing or on the district's grievance form. Appropriate precautionary steps, as determined by the school administration, may be taken during the course of the investigation. Confidentiality will be maintained to the extent consistent with the school's obligations to conduct a thorough investigation. If the investigation determines that sexual harassment, retaliation, or other inappropriate conduct has occurred, prompt steps to stop the conduct and reasonably prevent its recurrence will be taken. Any employee found who have engaged in sexual harassment against a student is subject to discipline, up to including discharge, administered, in a manner consistent with law, and any collective bargaining agreement covering an employee. Any student found who have engaged in sexual harassment is subject to discipline up to and including suspension and/or expulsion. Information: Copies of the grievance form and procedures are in the student-parent handbook on the district's website and in each school building. Questions may be referred to Ms. Bowden or the Office of the Superintendent David S. Troughton, North Reading Middle School, 19 Sherman Road, North Reading, Mass., 01864, at phone number 978-664-7810. So other than that, not limited to, or whatever that change was. I think that was the only one, right?
That's it. You have a motion?
Move through.
Second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have to read this one, too?
Um, let me see.
It doesn't say.
Which one is this?
Discussion approved. The 504 policy.
I would recommend that we go through this, yes.
I'm happy to do this.
There's a letter. Let's just...
There's a letter, but I don't, I don't have a policy. I have a letter.
Oh, the grievance complaint.
And a memorandum.
Right. The grievance, the one that says grievance complaint procedure, it's actually a regulation. It's part of our policy, A, B, B, A.
All right.
Karen, you got to read it.
The draft grievance complaint. All right. So is this the first reading of this?
It's actually, it's, it's...
We don't need...
It's currently there, we're revising, so...
Okay. North Reading Public Schools Grievance Complaint Procedure for Non-Discrimination Compliance. The superintendent of schools annually appoints a coordinator for non-discrimination compliance and will be vested with the authority and responsibility of processing all complaints and grievances of discrimination and sexual harassment. All matters involving discrimination and sexual harassment, complaints, and grievances will remain confidential to the extent consistent with the North Reading Public Schools obligation relating to investigations and due process rights of individuals affected. Any member of the school committee, uh, school community who believes that he or she has been subjected to discrimination or sexual harassment is urged to report any incident of discrimination or harassment to the building, principal, or supervisor, and the coordinator for non-discrimination compliance within thirty business days of the alleged incident. Every effort should be made to provide the names of anyone involved, the date, time, place, location of any alleged misconduct, a description of the alleged misconduct, and an account of any circumstances which may be relevant to the particular situation. A complainant may wish to have support of a faculty member and/or parent or guardian in cheek here. and an account of any circumstances which may be relevant to the particular situation. The complainant may wish to have support of faculty member and/or parent or guardian if he or she is a student, present at all discussions involving the case. In addition, the complainant is urged to keep written notes on all things relevant to the complaint and make at least two copies of these notes for reference purposes. Staff members who receive complaints are expected to call them to the attention of the building, principal, or supervisor and the Coordinator of Non-Discrimination Compliance immediately or as soon as possible thereafter and follow the guidelines established above. The Non-Discrimination Compliance Coordinator will take appropriate steps to investigate and or resolve the complaint within ten business days of the initial report made by the charging party. So, such steps may include, but are not limited to, the following: A. The Non-Discrimination Compliance Coordinator, NDCC, will confer with the charging party, the complainant, in order to obtain a clear understanding of that party's statement of the facts. Depending on the circumstances, the NDCC may request the complainant write a letter to the charged party respondent summarizing the nature of the behavior and requesting that it stop. B. The NDCC will then attempt to meet with the respondent in order to obtain his or her response to the complaint and may request the respondent write a letter to the complainant. The NDCC will explain to the respondent that retaliation against someone who has filed a complaint is prohibited. C. The NDCC will hold as many meetings with the parties as is necessary to gather facts. D. The NDCC will also interview any and all persons named by either party in the course of the investigation to determine the validity and/or scope of the claim. E. The NDCC will submit a written report of all the findings to all parties. F. On the basis of the NDCC's perception of the situation, he or she may, number one, attempt to resolve the matter informally through conciliation. Two, report the incident and transfer the record to the superintendent for his or her designee and so notify the parties by certified mail. Three, report the matter to the local police if criminal activity is potentially involved. After reviewing the record made by the Non-Discrimination Compliance Coordinator, the superintendent or designee has ten business days to gather the evidence necessary to decide the case and thereafter impose any sanctions deemed appropriate, including a recommendation for a letter of reprimand or a warning or a suspension of one to two days. Sure. Sorry, did I just...
One to ten days.
One to ten days, sorry. Termination or expulsion is subject to the requirements of due process. Notwithstanding, it is understood that in the event of resolution, in the event a resolution involves disciplinary action against an employer or a student, the complainant will not be informed of the disciplinary action unless it directly involves the complainant acting that word. I.e., a directive to stay away from the complainant as might occur in a harassment complaint. A written report of the findings will be submitted to all parties. All parties have ten business days to appeal the decision of the findings to the school committee. A written statement in response to the findings may be submitted on appeal, but one is not required. The school committee will hear the appeal on the date of the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting. The appeal process is limited to a review of the existing record. Unless the committee determines that there are exigent circumstances, calling for consideration of additional information. Within fifteen school days of the meeting, the school committee will provide a final disposition of the appeal to the parties. All the timelines above will be implemented unless the nature of the investigation or other exigent circumstances prevent such implementation, in which case the parties will be notified and the investigation concluded as quickly as possible. Questions may be referred to David S. Trottin, Superintendent, telephone number 978-664-7810. Pamela Bowden, Coordinator for Non-Discrimination Compliance, telephone number 978-664-9557, extension 224. Or Christine Danju, oh, not sent it wrong. Director of...
Christine.
Thanks a lot. Director of People and Personnel Services, telephone 978-664-7823. I just can't help myself commenting. Why is this font so small?
Well, you're the youngest one. You'd be able to read that with no problem.
Cherry?
Could I read one too?
No.
You're not the next one.
Oh, there's more?
No, that, no, that's it.
So, we need to approve that, or is that a, is, is that a policy?
This is, um, this is not a policy. These are, is, we have, we have a policy.
Yep.
We've always had a policy on all of these. What we're doing, uh, is, again, because the Office of Civil Rights in reviewing our policies is recommending that we, um, we add certain changes, and that's what we're doing here. Policy decisions is one of the most important roles for school committees. No other body in the school department, including school councils, because I know that a question was raised in the high school council by a member of the high school, school council, to have the high school council actually develop these policies and rewrite them into handbooks. And I made it very clear through Mr. Bernard into any school council that it is not the role of the school council to write policy. It is the role of the school committee to write policy and approve policy, and it's the role of the superintendent of schools to implement those policies. So, I've had to direct, uh, that it was quite a concern with one member of the high school council who was, um, asking that, um, the school council at the high school take over that responsibility. It's inappropriate.
So, that last one wasn't the 504 yet? That one was still the, that's the discrimination, or the grievance complaint procedure, right?
Correct.
Right.
So, do we need to approve that?
I would approve it, absolutely. Right, these revisions.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ananims.
Uh, we have, do we have to read these next two?
I would absolutely read these next two.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take one more, and then we'll, we'll throw the last one up for grabs.
I go right in.
"North Reading Public Schools Pupil Personnel Services Procedural Safeguards Regarding Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973." Volume six, no.
So noted.
You should have that one, that was in the packet.
It looks like a letter, it starts out, "Dear Parents and Guardians..."
It starts out, "Dear Parents and Guardians."
Oh, okay. Yes?
No. No, it looks just like, it's a...
All right.
Okay. Got it? Got it. "Dear Parents and Guardians, Section 504 is an act that prohibits discrimination against persons with a handicap in any program receiving federal financial assistance. The act defines a person with a handicap as anyone who, one, has a mental or physical impairment which substantially limits one or more major life activities. Major life activities include activities such as caring for oneself, performing manual tasks, walking, it should be a comma after walking, seeing, hearing, speaking. Two, has a record of such an impairment, or three, is regarded as having..."
Breathing, learning.
Oh, breathing, learning, and working, sorry. "Two, has a record of such an impairment, or three, is regarded as having such an impairment. In order to fulfill its obligation under Section 504, the North Reading Public School District recognizes a responsibility to identify, evaluate, and if the child is determined to be eligible under Section 504, to afford access to appropriate educational services which allow the child to participate in the general education program. If the parent or guardian disagrees with the identification, evaluation, or placement made by the professional staff of the school district, he or she has the right to file an internal grievance with the building 504 coordinator, the principal, or the district 504 coordinator, the pupil personnel services director. A copy of the grievance complaint form is in the student parent handbook. You may request the grievance procedures from the pupil personnel services office. In addition, the parent or guardian may request an impartial hearing before a hearing officer at the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, whether or not the party has pursued or is pursuing an internal grievance. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, also specifies rights related to educational records. This act gives the parents or guardian the right to, one, inspect and review his or her child's educational records; two, make copies of these records; three, receive a list of all individuals having access to those records; four, ask for an explanation of any item in the records; five, ask for an amendment to enter report on the grounds that it is inaccurate, misleading, violates the child's rights; and a hearing; six, a hearing before the superintendent for the, on the issue if the school... I think that should be refuses to make the amendment, not refused, right? Should be refuses on that last one on that page. I think it should be refuses, okay? Oh, this is short. If there are any questions, please feel free to contact me at the Pupil Personnel Services Office at 978-664-7823. Sincerely, Christine Danju, Director of Pupil Personnel Services, District 504 Coordinator. So, did you get those changes? Okay.
Just to comment on this, this is not a policy. This would be considered an exhibit that would be, that would support the policy. So, if, this letter, which is sent home to parents, which is, we send home the letter anyway. We do this every year. We notify parents, it's, it's also included in the end books.
Yep.
And send home. We're required to do that. We've been doing that. But I, again, I'm bringing forward publicly to alert everyone, including the committee, that this is standard operating procedure.
Is there anything different in this than what was in print?
The only thing that's different here is, uh, would be in terms of the, um, uh, again, the explicitly stating what the grievance procedure is, which has always been available and outlined. But again, uh, we, we did receive a complaint as a school district through the Office of Civil Rights, and we're in full compliance.
Okay.
Always have been, but again, this is a suggestion by OCR to further tighten up our policies and...
But basically making the information more available, more easily available.
As many times as anyone I could possibly ever want.
Okay.
And attached to that, you should have two letters that are directed to all principals and to the personnel staff.
Yes.
And I think there's another one.
Oh, there was one with the sexual harassment.
Yeah, and there's, there's one.
Yes, it looks like an email.
And the first one is, again, um, talking about students with disabilities on 504 condemnation plans, and the other one is on non-discrimination, Title 1, 2, 6, 9, Sexual Harassment in Section 504, which we include, by the way, every year in our personnel selected policies and other regulations that we send out to staff and have staff, staff sign off on. But this is a specific memo that we're sending directly out to the administrators to make sure that they get it, which we know they do anyway. And it's part of the training that we're required to do on an annual basis. Also, Friday is part of the annual administrative workshop. This Friday, I think I mentioned, that we'll have Attorney Maguire, and we'll be reviewing all of this, again, to be in full compliance to respond to a complaint that we received through the Office of Civil Rights.
Great. Well, can we have a motion to the revision that now read?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised procedural safeguards regarding Section 504 of Rehabilitation Act of 1973.
Second.
Second, Michael. Any further...
With, with changes, as noted.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, move right into the next one.
Do you have to read the letters too?
No.
No, we don't have, oh, yes, thank you. All right, so well done.
Just one question, under that letter, under tutoring, under paragraph one. See what says tutoring in the letter?
Tutoring must either be delivered by student or faculty.
In paragraph, in number one under tutoring, it says, "Monitoring and evaluation student progress and being available to answer questions from tutors." Shouldn't it be tutors and or tuties? If we're gonna be consistent?
Oh, with the mentors and the mentees?
Yes.
Someone throw something.
Well, tuti, tuti was a character on...
But seriously, why isn't it tutors and tuties?
Do you remember tuti on the Facts of Life that showed?
Dane Van Der...
This is, this is not a funny topic.
The Koran.
Okay, no, we understand.
What this is, is the...
Who's to call the question? I don't know.
This is, this, this is addressed to principals This is, this, this is addressed to principals and the PPS staff, and it's basically saying them, to them, that as a district, we have a responsibility to, as one way to provide faith under 504 is to provide tutoring. A tutor generally is an outside person, maybe an inside staff, but as part of that evaluation, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services and any principal must be available to oversee that instruction and to monitor and evaluate student progress and being available to answer questions from the tutors who we're hiring. So it's linking back, the tutors are not off on their own. They never have been. They fall under Chris Dianju's office as PPS director. She sets them up. She's responsible. They have to be qualified. These tutors are not secured by an individual on the outside. They're paid out of public funds, out of tax dollar funds. We need to approve them, and we're the ones who are going to decide whether they're qualified. We make that decision in providing that 504 plan, not someone who is choosing who they want for a tutor.
Right.
Because we have no ability to monitor them and therefore have no ability to implement this plan.
Right.
And therefore subject the district to legal action. It should, something happened here. This is our responsibility. We take it very seriously.
There are a couple typos.
Yes, there are.
It should be, in paragraph, in one under tutoring, it should be in each area of instruction provided. And then overseeing should be one word.
Yeah.
I found a couple others in that. I'll give you the...
There's a couple typos.
Yes, 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 give them your mark. Okay, so, so we're almost done with this agenda. Bill some payroll or...
Done.
Being speculated.
You said November?
Minutes. We have minutes from June eighth, open session.
I read the, I didn't find anything.
I didn't find anything. Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the open, the minutes for the open session, June eighth, two thousand nine.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
June eighth, executive session?
Same thing. I'll make a motion to approve.
Couple things. The location, I think, was the high school library.
Carl?
You know, I'm...
Oh, that's right. It was the library. The library was, that's right.
And I was present at that.
Carl was present.
That's why I know.
That's why? It's a good thing you read that, Carl. So Carl was present and it was at the high school library. Thanks, Carl.
A motion with those amendments?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Professor Sting.
So it was now, Karen?
Yeah.
Do you have two second changes?
We do. We have two letters of resignation, one from Mr. James Larkin, who has resigned or submitted a letter of intent to resign from his position as a high school English teacher. And secondly, we have a letter of intent to resign from our position, from Deborah Farrakano as, from her position as a classroom teacher at the middle school.
Okay. And subcommittee reports. Let's go right to the athletic one.
We're done. We already, the two athletics subcommittee items were the turf field and the...
And the user piece.
User piece.
And we pretty much got a very good update from the athletic director on the schedule that you heard tonight on the turf field.
We, I was hoping to write off one of the agenda items too, if Mr. Boucher did his report on the middle school, but, um, anyway, I have a request from the Youth at Risk Subcommittee, from Jenny O'Leary, the youth director. She's a member of the Youth at Risk Subcommittee. She's been actively engaged in our programming decisions, and she's a vital piece of the group for the past year that she's been here in North Reading. And as many of you know, her position is funded through donation. She is not yet on the town's budget. So the group that supports her in the risker is doing some fundraising and some campaigning to bring awareness of the programs she provides, and they want a recommendation or support from the school committee to, you know, give some kind of quote or background information to, to speak to the value of Jen's participation through the Youth at Risk. Because it's part of the school system, I just thought it would, should come from the committee as a whole. She has asked that David and the administrators give her a recommendation, and that the school committee also would give her something to use.
So would that be just, I mean, I, I support the, the department and I support the work she's doing, but would it be just be a motion of support from us, or...
I think more specifically, it has to tie in through the youth of, the Youth at Risk, because that's where the schools gain the value, I mean, certainly the community gains a broader value in having her in town.
And what is she, what is she looking for this, for this for? I just...
They're putting together a brochure that describes what the youth services does, and because they do interact with the schools, they're looking for something to validate that, and, and hopefully, and it would be factually, to mention the value that we have built.
Have you worked with her at all, Marie?
Yes.
I, I, I mean, I'd be more than willing to give an endorsement through you as to you coming up with something that...
To put in that brochure.
Based on your experience with her.
Yeah.
Because we're not as familiar with some of the work.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I certainly advocate...
Then with David, we'll put together something.
Or something like that.
With the school committee.
Yeah.
We basically do a commendation of her work, would you agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
She has been just instrumental in just bridging gaps that had existed, although the Youth at Risk Subcommittee has been doing a great job of reaching out through the police department and bringing programs in that we cater to the youth of North Reading rather than the Kandir program.
Good programs, good.
And Jenny's just bringing in the loop when we're not with the kids in the school day and the police officer's out with them because they're over patrolling. She's running programs. She's got a hotline. If the kids need help, they can reach right out to her.
She's also been really helpful with the community service program at the high school and finding opportunities for the students to get their required hours. I know she's been helpful with that.
In the time that I've worked with her, I've noted just such a real growth in her getting to know the kids and then getting the kids engaged. They really own the programs. You know, they don't just show up and pay a fee. They, they run them. They, it is a R the program. She is, and it's because of her and the work that she's willing to do, so, but we have to bring it around and show how it's really valued the school. And I think for the Youth at Risk, we could do that. But I just didn't want anyone to read anything about how the school really values her.
I think if you put together a commendation based on your work with her, I think...
Okay. Want to send that to me? Redrafts and... All right.
I feel like, like, I think like Jerry does, that I don't really have any interaction there at all, really have anything kind of personal connection to it, so I feel a little bit apprehensive about giving a personal like reminder on it, but, you know, I fully trust your opinion on it at the same time. I think that goes along with things like we saw here earlier tonight. Each one of these little linkage programs, if you read through the middle school survey...
It's very interesting.
We can use every single program that we can find to link kids in and, and let them know that we all care. And, and that, that rings out in the survey. I understand that that survey shows something that's fairly characteristic of middle school. So my first reading through it before I got that information was a little bit panicky.
Same thing with, same thing with me. I read some of those numbers.
Oh.
Yeah.
But I, it could be that there's some definition issues and so forth.
Yes, don't put it in context and it'll make a lot more sense.
Are you proud of your school?
Right.
Well, you know, I'm proud of all the people in it, but...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It'll be interesting when you hear his recap.
So there's, the, the, the context that is in, the way the kids are looking at it may very well have a factor. But I think in every case, every way that we can connect in every opportu, every avenue we give kids to communicate their, their upsets out is a positive.
Okay, so we'll just write up something that speaks to how her work is connected with the schools and how we value it.
Clear internet or not, we'll shoot it through.
No, no, no. Did want to speak on the... So administrative reports are here at the desk.
Just a comment. We ended the year on a, on a good note, but we, we had our first experience with some cases of H1N1 or so-called swine flu. It's very interesting how the Department of Public, Mass. Department of Public Health has been very supportive in keeping school districts, school nurses, superintendents up to date. I mean, we're getting almost every other day some update from Mass. DPH. And in turn, I've made sure that any memo that has information directed for parents and staff to send that out in several ways. One, it's posted on the website. Secondly, we have used the alert now, and we did, we found a couple of times the emails are not getting through, so we were going back and investigating just that data, database to make sure that it's in place. But I think we all heard that there were some students on our trip to Washington last Monday who, who got ill. And of those students, not all of them have swine flu or had swine flu. In fact, the, there's some controversy, not controversy, but there's some different approaches to whether or not a doctor will actually order a confirmation test. So we, so we can't say that a student has swine flu. We don't report to, to even a local public health. That has to come from, from a doctor. The reporting responsibility comes from the doctor. We hear if a parent is letting us know. So a doctor's not going to pick up the phone and tell the principal or the teacher, I've diagnosed this student with this particular condition. That would go to the parent under FERPA, and then in turn, the doctor is responsible for reporting that. Not all of them do, and many of them are not actually doing the confirmation test. What they're doing is confirming that the student or the staff member has influenza type A, and then stating that perhaps the symptoms have some commonality with what we see typically in a patient with H1N1. That's not a direct confirmation, so we have to be very careful of that. I've asked the principals over the last week to keep me advised of changes in the attendance, and it's not any different from what we would see throughout the year. We expect that attendance in our schools ranges on a daily basis from, anywhere from ninety-two to ninety-five percent, and that has not deviated. We did have, again, some parents reporting flu-like symptoms, their children were being kept out. It's recommended that if a child has influenza, they're kept out of school for seven days or at least twenty-four hours following the cessation of the symptoms, whichever is longer. Some parents, we can't force a parent to comply with that. There are certain diseases under Massachusetts law, that if a child is diagnosed with those and it's reported to us, that the child would be excluded from school.
Quarantine.
Quarantine, or until they were on a treatment such as an antibiotic. You cannot use an antibiotic for any kind of virus. There are some medications that perhaps alleviate the, some of the symptoms, but it's not a cure. So I know there was a flurry of information that probably was sparked by some of the, you know, you don't, you don't frequently get an email from the superintendent about swine flu. But I felt because Mass. Department of Health was suggesting that this information be sent out, we sent it out. And of course...
They suggested it, they didn't tell you that you should do it?
They, they do not. Strongly recommend.
Sorry, net epidemiologist, if I'm not...
It's just, yeah.
So I want to thank our school nurses. I think they did a terrific job on dealing with this, and certainly, when you have students down in Washington and several of them are ill, it doesn't take long for emails and texting to, you know, to, to get home.
Can I make a suggestion that we actually send the parents a letter thanking them for their work and chaperones?
I think we definitely should do that this year because, especially the, one of the parents is a nurse, and my son said he went in to get his allergy medicine from her one day, and he goes, Dad, there were like twenty-nine kids in her room. I'm truly exaggerating, but I think she did a tremendous amount of work down there for the week, along with the others. That's a great idea.
We should be...
Thank them.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Anything else? Then we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I think one of the future businesses is to follow meetings of schedule.
Yeah, we have to, we have to set our summer meeting schedule.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So Cliff, when's the boat going to be in the water? We need to round your boat schedule.
The boat's in the water, the other boat isn't.
Okay. So we usually meet, what, once?
Once in July and once in August?
Then we have our goal session. Jerry's favorite meeting in August, goal setting.
Is it on a boat? Is it on a boat?
No, but we get pizza.
Awesome. I'm making cupcakes.
You can bring in cupcakes for that. I, I, I think we can give special dispensation.
Oh, great.
For the goal-setting meeting.
So what do we have for July, David?
Well, you know, I think we try to do a Tuesday or a Wednesday.
Okay. To a lot of people on weekend.
So maybe the twenty-eighth, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first sounds great. Day or week does it?
What day is it?
Truth Day, December.
July twenty-one.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay.
Should we set for August too, or?
Sure.
Sure.
We're not...
Do we start at seven still? Yeah, right? Yeah.
What's August like?
Um... I'd say either the eighteenth or...
I can do either the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, but I cannot do the fourth when you want.
Do you want to do the twenty-fifth, that's closer to school?
Is that two weeks to school?
Starting, or is that two weeks?
Well, I was going to recommend that, let's see, we would, we would probably...
There would be number nine, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
We probably would meet on the first, uh, I don't think we'd meet, well, we, yeah, our September schedule would be the eighth and the second.
Right, the second. Or the, the eighth, no, the eighth is a Tuesday, right? So it would be the eighth and the twenty-first. Is the eighth a Tuesday?
Oh, I'm sorry, it would be the fourteenth, no, in September, it would be the second, the fourteenth.
All right, fourteenth to twenty.
And not the twenty-eighth. That would be on the third.
Right.
And then number twenty-nine.
Okay.
So that would be September.
September's the fourteenth.
Twenty-nine. And then August eighteenth.
That works. Everyone okay? Is it a Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.